Okay. Well, welcome to the August 10, 2015 work session. Work sessions are a more informal setting to update the council on business items. No vote will be taken on work session items. Tonight, there are five items on the agenda. Public comment is allowed that is germane to an agenda item. If you wish to speak, you are required to fill out a public comment card and turn it in to the city clerk. Public comment will be allowed for a total of 10 minutes per agenda item and no more than two minutes per person. Public comment will be heard at the beginning of each item. Once the item is called, no other public cards will be accepted. Our first item is being moved to the September 14 work session. Then we're going to, I think we're going to go ahead and take item number three next. Are there any public comments for item number three?
Hang on one, yeah, one second. I believe our budget discussion might be the longest of the day. It really is with the agenda, the way it's published tonight. The third item on the agenda is one that probably has more public input than the remainder of the items. So if the desire is to go forward with number three, let's do that, but let's go ahead and announce that anybody who might want to speak on behalf of item number three, which deals with the Arnold Mill Form-Based Code, if you'd identify yourself to the clerk at this point and fill out a card that agree.
Are there any others that are going to want to speak on agenda item number three, which is the discussion of RZ 15-11 to create the Arnold Mill Form-Based Code, Chapter 64 of the city code?
Mr. Dillard, we're going to have a presentation to make prior to the public comment, so we'll call you in just a second.
Councilman Thurmond, may I go ahead and present some comments on this first?
Yes, please.
Before we get started?
Yes, please.
All right. So I know Mr. Dillard was just about to, well, we get up and address this, but I will say that the city manager has delivered to me correspondence by a law firm on behalf of individual property owners that profess to own around 40 acres of property that would be impacted by this form-based code. I have not had a chance to review all of it in great detail, but the city manager has been kind enough to get it to me today. And it at least affects my recommendation with respect to how we move forward tonight. I know that we are at a work session, and so this evening is simply for discussion. This would be what I would consider a constitutional challenge letter. It is a little more detailed and a little more aggressive than most of the constitutional letters that I'm used to seeing in the land use context. It obviously pertains to the Arnold Mill Form-Based Code, and it raises a host of issues with respect to the draft version of the Form-Based Code that this council may be considering. So let me just very briefly summarize those as quickly as I've been able to do it since I've had this letter. First of all, it raises procedural and due process challenges with respect to the draft of the Form-Based Code and the process by which we have attempted to work through this Form-Based Code. It suggests that there is disparate treatment manifested in the code as between the Crab Apple version of the code and the Arnold Mill version of the code. It indicates that the density limitations in the proposed Form-Based Code are economically unfeasible. It suggests that engaging in the TDR process as part of the code as a way, the letter suggests, to make certain pieces of property viable constitutes an unlawful delegation of legislative authority. It indicates and alleges that various components of the code constitute a taking as prohibited by the Constitution. It suggests that the code is vague and indefinite, that the architectural styles set forth in the code serve no public purpose. It further suggests that the height limitations within the code are arbitrarily low, that the square footage limitations are so low as to leave no economic value to the owner's properties, and that the city has presented no legal justification for the enactment of the code. That is a summary. Obviously, the letter is longer than what I just read off to you just then, but you get the idea. Certain comments made by council members are mentioned in the letter to suggest and make various points within this letter. Council members, I'm going to have to take some time with respect to this letter to advise the city manager and by extension, the city council of my position with respect to this letter. However, with respect to tonight, I think my recommendation obviously is, you know, pursuant to Milton sort of culture and policy, we can have public comments on it. That's fine. But when this matter comes back before the council with respect to when you can take actual action, official action, you know, you won't be taking official action this evening, but when you have the opportunity to do so in concert with the city manager, I may recommend that you table this matter to allow me sufficient time to review it, to advise the city manager on it. And I think we'll be fine doing that because candidly, the property owner is implicated by this matter. They have a zoning, they have an economically viable zoning. If they want to modify that zoning, they can come in on a case-by-case basis and do that very thing and request an additional zoning. And so I don't think that anybody will be marginalized or disadvantaged by us taking some time with this. Also, given the nature of the posture that is being taken and given that, you know, various statements by council members are actually referenced in the letter, I would request that, you know, perhaps we keep interaction and comment at least this evening to a minimum. Now, that's obviously up to the council. I'm just giving you my recommendations, but I'd like you to give that some thought as well. Councilman Thurmond, thank you.
I did have one question. By tabling it, that means it could come up in a future council member meeting as we took it off the table, then it would come up in the meeting following that, but it could also stay on the table indefinitely? Is that correct?
That's right. That's the parliamentary concept of the table, is it can be for a short time, or candidly, it can be for an extended duration.
Okay.
Okay. I think probably the best thing to do is to, since we know we have one public comment, is to take that, and then we'll look to the council to, again, Ken's recommendation, I think we're better having less is more tonight, and probably none is appropriate. We'll take the public comment, and then we'll move forward with this item next week at the agenda and see what the council wants to do more efficiently with it.
And public comment comes from Mr. Dillard.
Thank you, members of council and staff. Appreciate your opportunity to hear us. We're not here to...
If you could please state your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you already had a name. I'm sorry about that. I'm Doug Dillard with Persley, Fries &amp; Torgelson, and I, along with Gerald Arnold, represent Southeast Property Development Corporation, Larry G. Davenport, and Georgia Golf Ventures, who own approximately 40 acres at the intersection of Cox Road and Arnold Mill, on Arnold Mill Road. They have been involved in this process, which I understand y'all have been going through for a while. They've attended all the public meetings, and they've participated and had input into that. We're not here to wholly oppose this Form-Based Code. What we're here to do is to try to achieve some uses, densities, and rights that we think are fairly fundamental and basic, not only in the federal constitution, but in the Georgia constitution. We've written a letter today to just put you on notice of that as required by Georgia law, but we're here to work it out. And I would agree with council that I think that to table this matter would be appropriate to give us an opportunity to sit down and discuss. The letter we wrote today was not for the purpose of creating division, but having gotten into this issue only within the last week, we had to, as lawyers, advise our clients as to what they needed to do in case there was some future action that was needed in the court. So as you can see in that letter, we've raised both procedural and due process constitutional issues relative to the Form-Based Code. And I appreciate the work that Caleb and his group has done. I have worked with TSW many times throughout the years. I think the world, Bill and Tom and those guys over there, they do good work. But I think we always have to realize that we've got to balance the public need against the private rights to use your property for any lawful purpose. And in doing so, that addresses density, it addresses height, it addresses use, it addresses any number of things, and we have tried to raise that in our letter. And what we're seeking is an opportunity to sit down and continue to discuss these issues. Our clients have been in most of these meetings, okay? And they were concerned that the most recent draft, which we didn't get until Friday, didn't adequately address what they felt like were reasonable economic uses in and around their property. So what we're doing here today, and by putting this before you tonight, is to ask further consideration and to ask that we continue to participate in open Bible dialogue to reach some sort of accord that we think would be good not only for us, but for the city. We are here, we're citizens of this city, and we want to be a part of it. So obviously, we've got procedural questions. Secondly, the densest, density, the densest transaction, transact zone in Arnold Mill Form-Based Code is T4 Open, which permits only three units per, by right. It's lower than the density entitlements in Crab Apple T4 Open Zone, which allows five units by right. And we're having a hard time. We realize that maybe the Crab Apple Birmingham area is a little more urban than what we're talking about, but there's no reason to make density distinctions between Crab Apple Birmingham and Arnold Mill Cox Road. And the planning commission recommended to the planning staff...
Excuse me, let me stop you right there, just for procedure purposes. In work sessions, you're allowed a total of 10 minutes, but it's per agenda item, but only two minutes per person, which is what I had read into the record earlier. It's up to the council. Do you want to go ahead and extend him some additional time because he's, right now, he's up a little over four minutes of time?
Okay.
Is it the will of the council? Go ahead and extend him, allow him, how many additional speakers do we have?
I don't have any other cards.
Do you want to go ahead and allow him additional time then?
Sure.
Okay. I'm sorry, but go ahead.
Ms. Thurmond, I don't think I'll take the full 10 minutes either, so we pretty well went through.
There's another five minutes on the clock remaining.
So the planning commission made certain recommendations to adopt a Form-Based Code based on maximum density set for some Crab Apple. That has not gone forward in the current draft. The TDR density, to require property owners to purchase the TDR density in order to make economically viable use of the property is inequable and inconsistent with other Form-Based Codes in the city, and will deter, if we can't get those, if we can't buy them, we can't, I don't care what you approve, if it's all dependent on TDRs, then that's why, that's why it's not a lawful way of going about making these kinds of decisions, because if we can't buy them, then we can't, we can't develop the property. And so that's why we're arguing that we need a density that's economically viable that is as a matter of right rather than dependent on the TDRs. The draft codes vate and indefinite in many areas. Restrictions on architectural styles and building materials will render development economically unfeasible. You know, this idea of vernacular and queen hand win, limitation win, in fact, we've got seven different architectural zones that are approved in Crab Apple. And obviously, at the turn of the century, the early 1900s, these Greek Orthodox and Gothic and those kinds of things were approved throughout Georgia, and were very prevalent. So we think that you ought to look at the Crab Apple and why limit us to two when Crab Apple has seven? During, and the unworkable development standards, many of the development standards are so stringent that an owner cannot make economically viable use of the property. The height limit of two to three floors in T3 and 4 is arbitrarily low. The restriction of commercial and office use to ground floor is unreasonable. What if somebody wants to come in and build an office building, and they're limited to the ground floor only? Limitation on permitted square footage per building is so low, the setbacks in lot width, lot coverage, building placement, and other requirements are so restrictive as to make it economically unfeasible. So we think those are issues that are reasonable. Our property owners have the right to use their property for lawful purpose. You have the right to regulate that use as long as there's some relationship to the protection of the public health, safety, and welfare. We don't think that balance is there. And what we want to do is to help to work with you to participate in a workable solution that gives us the economic right to use our property, gives us a reasonable economic use of our property, yet at the same time achieves the public health, safety, and welfare goals that you're trying to achieve for your city. So I have representatives of the neighborhood here tonight. We're available to answer any questions, and I thank you for allowing me to make this presentation.
I believe that is all the public comment for tonight. It'll be then up to the council as to whether or not we want to have a discussion on this topic tonight, or if you're ready to move on to the next agenda item.
I'd recommend that we table this item.
I think, I think we've only had to table item...
To a session to be determined later on.
We're not actually going to take that position tonight. We'll take that a week from now.
This will be on our agenda for, at the next council meeting because it's already been advertised.
Correct.
And at that council meeting, we can make the decision to table it if that's the will of the council.
Or to take action, or whatever you want to do. But that is certainly one of the options that you have.
Correct.
Okay.
There's no further discussion?
Let's, if you're, if you're okay with it, I certainly would go in whatever way you want to. Items four and five on the agenda are fairly, fairly quick-moving, and then we could just roll up our sleeves and get into a budget discussion.
That's right.
Item four, which is discussion of RZ 15-16, which is the amend private swimming pool standards for detached dwellings, Section 64, 1069B, and discussion of RZ 15-17 to create a definition for barrier indefinition, Section 64.1. Maybe let Kathy make a quick presentation on those, or the building official make a presentation on those, and you can ask questions and all that stuff. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor Prochannan, members of the council. I think you all know Vince Hines. He's our chief building official.
Hey, Vince.
And we have two items on the agenda, and Vince is going to give you a presentation on them. Part of them, we're going to ask that sections be withdrawn and other sections remain. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Vince and let him make the presentation.
Can you hear okay on the microphone?
I can, it's recording fine. It's a little hard to hear from the speaker, and I can't hear nothing.
Okay. Okay. Well, we'll just listen carefully. I guess everybody is here. Our staff, okay.
His family.
Y'all just listen, listen closely.
So essentially, what we want to do is we need to update our codes. The section still has 2006 code, so we need to update that to 2012 code.
So we're talking about RZ 15-16.
So Section 64, 1609, Swimming Pool B. All swimming pools shall be completely surrounded by barrier as required by the, we want text amendment to change 2006 to 2012. Section AG 105 of our building code, change that from 2009 to 2012. Initially, initially, I was in an attempt to try to provide a little additional safety. I was going to bring in the barrier location from the 150 feet to 20 feet. After doing some further investigations and meeting with the pool contractors, we've decided to drop that and leave the 150 feet as is, as long as they're meeting the barrier requirements for their, a lot of folks. This all came about because we're having issues with what is a fence and what is a barrier. And so we're slowly working towards the compliance with making the fence meet the barrier requirement. So there's really no need to, with, alongside with the different outdoor living spaces that we have in this city, it's almost impossible to bring that, bring that in. So I've spoken with the pool contractors and their association and come to the conclusion that we're just going to leave the 150 feet in there and drop the request to change it to 20. With relation to RZ 15-17, we were going to install the definition of a barrier, or a definition of a barrier, in the zoning ordinance. It's already in the building code. It would just, it would just be a matter of redundancy and probably add to confusion instead of clarification. So we're asking that we withdraw that request as well.
So 17 withdraw the whole request, and 16, the only change would be the date, 2006 to 12.
Yes. Yes.
And these have both been advertised, and we will be actually taking action on both of them at the next council meeting, correct?
Yes, correct.
So Vince, the 150-foot requirement is in the 2006 IRC and IBC?
No, sir. That's, that's in the zone, that's in the zoning ordinance. That was brought a couple of years back, I believe, to bring it, because we've had, the issue is, the barrier is so far away. If you have a five-acre tract, the barrier is so far away, at least bringing it into 150 feet kind of gets it to a regular-sized lot to protect that pool from people getting in it. I believe that, that was the objective of the 150 feet.
And there was some language, we talked about this, there was some language that would suggest that the pool barrier is intended to provide a barrier from the pool and the house and the pool and the remainder of the yard.
That's correct.
So there was guiding language that suggested that the barrier was not intended on being a perimeter fence, that it was intended to protect the pool from the remainder of the yard.
So having, having discussed this with the contractors and seeing the plans that come through with some of these rather extravagant outdoor living spaces, basically, you know, the homeowner's going to have to be responsible for protecting that pool. Simple as that. We'll, we'll make sure that the barrier requirements are met, and the alarms are on the, on the doors going out to the backyard, to the pool area, and they have to accept that responsibility to protect the pool.
Are there any specific, I'm sure there may be, requirements by insurance companies that govern distances?
I looked into that, and nobody really seems to pin down a distance. I think for that very reason, that there's so many different options out there for, for pools and decks and living spaces that basically they're saying, okay, well, this is, this is what we want, to accomplish the barrier requirement, and then you're on your own from there as a responsible...
It ought to come down to the individual property owner to be responsible for that.
And that's, that's where we're at. That's, that's where we're at. I was...
Quite frankly, I think, and I don't know, Ken, if we were to mandate X, and X didn't work, are we, should we have mandated something closer than that? Are we ever on the hook for anything?
That makes sense.
Vince, I need to take a little more higher-level question. So the International Building Code is governed by who, written by who, and what is our reaction to what they do? Is it, explain that to me.
Well, it's, it's an independent, it's an independent code authority.
Okay.
And it's adopted in almost, well, 48 states.
By the HPA or...
No, by, by the DCA, Department of Community Affairs.
Okay.
In each, each individual state. So the code as adopted with amendments, with state amendments by DCA, is essentially, it becomes law at that point.
And it's our code. That's the code.
That is our code. Okay. So as it becomes law, then we adopt that as well. Okay.
Well, I'm clear.
Are there any other questions? Great. Thank you all. So you'll see this next week.
Okay.
Thank you, Vince.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
That's three.
Mysteriously, it doesn't have my name on that board up there. Council, this, council, this will be a first, that first time we look forward to every year where we operate, or put together in an operational package what we think makes a good fiscal budget. We deliver that to you. We're going to spend a little bit of time talking through it tonight and what some of the rationale was in putting it together. This is something that will come forward in an additional work session. It'll come forward at two additional council meetings, and frankly, can come up additionally individually with council as you work through it if you have questions. One of the things about this year's budget is that I'm coming to you on the front end by saying that at this point in the fiscal year, based upon our available staffing, there are no additional positions requested in this budget, so you don't have to look and see where those are at this point. We've got some that we're potentially looking at that would be revenue offsetting, but we're, we're still working through that. And this, again, is real, real, real high level. So as I've told you every year, the first time we deliver the budget to you, it has the opportunity to change and become more specific as we drill in on the cost of healthcare for employees, as we drill in on some of the things that we just don't know with certainty until we get to that point of being ready for budget adoption. So I can tell you where those assumptions have been made. They've been made under the largest percentage possibility that could exist in that particular line item. So we're delivering a budget tonight that is close to balanced. It's, it's not balanced yet to the extent that it still shows revenues over expenditures of $120,794. It's not, this might be the first year that we've ever had a budget that we've brought that had revenues exceeding expenditures by that level, but we'll want to work with you to prioritize where that funding might go, or to see what potentially comes out of our council and staff retreat this week, is to see where, where that money might go. Again, any of the dollars that are in the budget are transferable based upon council priority, but we think this budget reasonably captures your direction and vision for our next fiscal year. If you'd like, we can, we can start in tab one, and as we do provide as a general fund summary, you can see total revenues anticipated at $26,43,278, with expenditures at this point of $25,922,484. I'll turn it over to Stacy here in just a little bit, and we'll talk about how we are forecasting, or at least our initial thoughts on how we're forecasting the finishing of fiscal year 2015, or the year that we're in. If you want to flip over to the next tab, you can see that we have provided, there's two pages worth of revenues and other, revenues that come in the form of taxes and license and permits and other charges for service. We have been conservative in our revenue estimations, but more in keeping with the direction I think we received from this council in this year, that we were conservative, but not overly conservative, and we believe that based upon the trend, that these are decent projections for, for revenues. I'm happy to go into as much detail as you want tonight. You might just want an overview of how it's set up and then some of the high-level concepts, and then once you, I know Karen needs to dive into the numbers. Once that happens, then we'll come back and talk about it.
I do have one question on tab two.
Sure.
Real quick, and then just based on the route we're going, when do we anticipate we might start seeing impact fees come in?
That would be towards the beginning of this fiscal year. I think, Kathy, correct me if I'm wrong, are we in September potentially to consider that? October? October?
Okay. I just don't see a number there.
But this budget does not have impact fees in it at all.
Right.
So that would be above this...
Right.
Yes. Okay.
At what point in time will we have a better idea of what realistically we're going to finish out the current year with? Are you going to go into that, or...
Sure. I looked at, I looked at the revenues, and they're going to be really close to what we're projecting for FY '16. So we're, we're looking at a little over, hold on, I didn't bring those with me because I was too busy with putting the budget together, but we're looking at close to $26 million at the end of this fiscal year in revenues.
Okay.
So we would be ahead, and I'll have a better idea that by the time our retreat comes, if we want to talk about that then, or we want to talk more specifically about strategic planning in the retreat, but I can definitely have some more numbers for you within the next day.
So I guess what I'm looking at is realistically, you've got this 6.5 million beginning fund balance for fiscal year 2016. That number may be...
Like more 8.12.
Maybe closer to 8.
Right.
By the time you look at additional revenue and decreases in expenses.
Correct.
Okay.
We went through this, through the budgeting process this year like we've done in prior years, where we work with department heads and other key staff members to look through on a first pass the maintenance and operating needs of the city and what we would put in a maintenance and operating budget that would continue to, that would allow the city to continue to function and operate in largely the same condition that it is. continue to function and operate in largely the same condition that it is, to right-size anticipated expenses with, with supplies and other day-to-day needs. You can see here that if we look at, and we just go through by department, and you'll be able to do this when you dive in, that we start with the mayor and council's budget. We have, obviously have the stipends programmed in, with special attention and, and highlight here that we have funded somebody's travel to the Robert E. Knox Municipal Leadership Institute, that's a new line item. I think, Bill, you're going there later this week as a matter of fact, so we've got tomorrow. Tomorrow. So we've got some funding for additional council members to attend, or I don't know if that's one or an additional member, two?
Yes.
Okay, if that's of interest to you. We move over to the city manager's budget, you'll see that there's some change year over year to that. Typically, the first thing when, when you look at thirteen to fourteen to fifteen and say, my goodness, what's the change been, typically look the first time towards the consolidation of both Stacy's position and Carter's position within the line items in this particular cost center. So that will describe, largely describe why some of those numbers look different year over year, over the last couple of years. Don't anticipate any changes in staffing levels in the near future. I can highlight by department, but what, what we work through is just the general, general needs of the city in, in each department. I'm trying, as I go through, I'm trying to see if there's anything that jumps out at me that I want to highlight.
Washington City Council.
Okay.
What is our anticipated increase in like health insurance and stuff like that for this next year?
Good, that's a great question, and right now what we're hearing is that the anticipated increase is somewhere in the fifteen percent neighborhood, which candidly, based upon prior years, when we've been at twenty-six, twenty-seven percent of where we've started, fifteen is not, it's not terrible, although I've got to tell you, we're, we're watching to some degree what happens next year, when all of the requirements of the Affordable Care Act are in place, what that's going to mean to an employer, and how we structure our plans. Keep in mind that we're represented by a benefit broker, so that we, we did go to the market this year and we did end, add competition into it. I think at this point, we're leaning towards, and I think from a cost perspective, it makes sense to lean towards retaining the current provider, which is Blue Cross Blue Shield, but that's the, that's the percentage that we're, that we're seeing at this point.
I understand there's some mergers of health insurance companies going on with some buyouts that's happening, and so it's consolidating.
I'm not surprised with some of the requirements that we're seeing, and introducing this whole exchange into the mix and who's eligible for it and what type of plans that they offer. It's a changing world in healthcare.
Where you say we typically have, have programmed in to begin these discussions, twenty-six, twenty-seven percent, where do they usually fall?
They usually fall to about where we are right now. You know, the thing we haven't looked at yet is plan design, and that's where typically is a phase two that we, that we work towards to say, okay, we, we recognize based on plan performance, and we look at catastrophic claims, and we, and we try to anticipate future plan performance. The next thing we look at is how our plans are structured. And Phil, case in point was last year, we were able to save a tremendous amount of money by implementing a prescription medication co-pay, and we were able to offset that prescription medication co-pay with an HRA, and we basically made a twenty-six or twenty-seven thousand dollar investment to save ninety.
Yeah.
You know, so there's, there's things that we'll do as we start to look at now plan design and figure out, yeah, a lot of it is too, which, which of our employees are in which plan and what the, and what the anticipated use is, and we had a couple of catastrophic claims age out in the, in the form of aging out of a Cobra system here earlier this year, so, you know, we will see a totally different plan performance. But that's a, that answer your question, that's kind of where we are right now. City's clerk budget, or city clerk budget, the difference there between fiscal year fifteen and sixteen is election costs, that you'll see that those are captured in, in the event that we need them.
And that includes a runoff election if necessary?
No.
It does not affect?
Thank you, Suzy, I didn't know the answer to that, I figured if I stayed quiet, somebody would answer. But that's what's in that. General administration, no real major changes over last year. Finance department, nothing shocking, other than day-to-day, year-over-year things. The, the legal budget is anticipated to remain flat over, over last year at two hundred and thirty thousand. We should hit that target this year, Ken, so we don't, we need to hit it again next year.
He's a bad guy.
Information technology, this is where we capture some of our maintenance contracts, largely where our maintenance contracts are captured, which is the, the things that we run on the computers that, basically the, the programs. We anticipate continuing with the private provider that we have that implemented our cloud-based solution, VC three, anticipate continuing that relationship in this next fiscal year. Moving into human resources, nothing, nothing generally shocking in the human resource department. Day-to-day things, you know, I could flip through each page and, and say, nothing generally shocking. I'll just give you a couple of minutes to thumb, to go through the next four or five pages, and again, don't feel as though you have to capture everything tonight, I wouldn't expect you to, I'd expect you to sit down at home one night and almost go line by line and see if anything jumps out and causes you to ask a question. Certainly would be happy to take those. We've got the innovation and engagement department that is?
Went down because of website design.
Down because of the website design? Thank you.
Our public officials liability insurance decrease substantially?
We're back a couple of pages. Just give me a minute. I'm wondering if that's just a better right-size forecast?
Yeah.
So if it's not that it necessarily went down, I just, I think that's probably a better target.
Okay.
I got to court. One of the things, and I'm going to talk about, let's talk about court here real quick, one of the things that is programmed in this budget is the movement of our court from this facility to a shared facility with the city of Alpharetta and Crab Apple. Judges in, supportive of that, have been working with their city administrator. Frankly, the, the opportunity to own that building or have it otherwise repurposed doesn't exist in the next decade. It's at least another decade before they have any interest in parting with it or changing its function, and, you know, I know we had always talked about, well, sooner or later they'll want to sell it, they'll want to sell it, they'll want to sell it, it was going to be in the middle of our downtown. And finally, you know, we got to that point that they said, we're not going to sell it. So, so, okay, I get that. The, the neat thing is, is they use it Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and we have courts on Monday and Friday. So when you look at it and align on top of, on top of their facility what our needs are, it seems as though a great opportunity to remedy the need for this court to go somewhere when this building is moved out of our, you know, moved out of our rental space. So we still anticipate, and we have to in April seven, two thousand and seventeen, movement of the general administration function of the city as well as the council chambers to the new city hall complex in Crab Apple. It would seem as though while the opportunity exists, that it would be wise to explore this court option, particularly because the judge is supportive of it, and because it gives our court a permanent place to reside, a more permanent place to reside than, than this. We know that this is gone on, in September of two thousand and nineteen, and so we either in the capital projects account have to program for what it would cost to buy and build a new court building somewhere, or we can look at this partnership of an existing court that already functions as a court, that's already designed as a court, that doesn't put a judge in a corner of a council dais, because that's just kind of the best we have right now. I've been working with Bob on that, and the ball is in our court, that if they are open to their councils, it seems to be very supportive of it, that one of the things I need to talk to Ken about until we got a little left turn earlier today was, the ball is in our court to deliver to Alpharetta intergovernmental agreement to use their court. If everything works well, I will be bringing this intergovernmental agreement to you on September the twenty-second for your consideration, and Alpharetta will be bringing it to their council on September the twenty-second for their consideration as well. And looking at the square footage of the court and kind of determining, there, there has to be some consideration from Milton to Alpharetta to use the space, otherwise it's a hard sell in Alpharetta to say, we just gave the space away. But being reasonable with it, I believe based upon the square footage that we would use and the build-out that we would have to do in their building, there's two phases, the build-out to make it functional, and then the, the rental of forty percent of the courtroom, basically, because we'd use it two out of five days and they'd use it three out of five days, and the five hundred and seventeen plus or minus square feet that exist in the building that today vacant and not used. It's a library and a kitchen, and they would allow us to turn that into our court office space. So there's, it almost works out too well, that they have the facility, they have sufficient vacant space that we can move the three staff members that we would need to move over there over there. Estimated construction renovation cost at this point, and I could get better plans, and you could understand or get Carter to speak more specifically on it, but it's in the neighborhood of fifty-two thousand dollars, which is not an extraordinary modification, considering it would be a building that we would use for at least ten years.
Is that basically for the, for those, to, to, to upfit those spaces into the offices?
It does a couple of different things. One, and most importantly, is it takes what exists today as a kitchen and creates a place for the, for the court admin that, that takes the payments, and also there's a payment window created. Alpharetta is very specific, they want to make sure the signage is right so that people don't get confused who they're coming to, to see, but it would be just as functional, maybe a little bit more than, than this particular building. So yes, it takes two spaces, it makes them three, and it converts a thing that is a kitchen today into more of an office and storage.
But as far as courtroom itself, maybe if we're just walk, walking in those days, flipping the nameplate on it and?
That's right, that's right. Our, our judge has asked that we bring some type of a video monitor to the courtroom that they don't have. The Alpharetta judge prior to court makes a verbal announcement as to people's rights with respect to them being in court. Our judge likes to play a video, and that's just a total personal preference thing, that if he's ever challenged, I think what he wants to say is, I don't have to remember what I said to them because I said this. And so, you know, they don't have a monitor in the courtroom today, but they certainly wouldn't object to one. One of the things that we were thinking about, and that cost might have come substantially down from the fifty-two, is one of the things they were talking about was changing the fixed seating in the courtroom to non-fixed seating. If you've been in that courtroom, they have pews from the old church, and there was some thought that from a capacity standpoint or a use of the room standpoint, that they might want to go with something non-fixed as opposed to those, those benches. I think the more we have talked through that, the less people are really in support of that than were initially maybe in support of it. I think there's some degree that the church pews add to the, to the character of the room, to the character, the history of the building, is one small touch that would be taken away if they were, if they were removed. And if we don't remove the, the church pews, then we don't have to fix the carpet. So there's a couple of expenses that fall off. I think from our perspective, we might have liked the non-fixed seating because we could have added to the capacity of the room. And in adding to the capacity of the room, we can schedule better, we can schedule court quicker because we can handle more at one time, and when you're only in there two days a week versus three, it's nice to be able to handle a bigger docket, you're kind of confined in non-fixed, in fixed seating, you're kind of confined to the number of people that can fit on those benches. We're working through that, but I say all that to say, you'll see in this budget, a request for some construction modification dollars for the court building over there, and where we've gotten with Alpharetta on an initial proposal is three thousand dollars per month in, in rent, thirty-six thousand dollars per year. It was, Bob and I had to sit down at a table and kind of pick a number based upon a rationale of between twenty-nine, twenty-nine thousand and fifty-four thousand, because we brought our own rationale to the table on how to calculate the cost, and he finally just said, how about a good round number of three thousand a month? And I said, well, between twenty-nine and fifty-four, that's closer to my end. So, you know, we'll start there. Obviously, this is something that you'll be able to consider outside of the budget process, I just want to highlight it as a, as a project we're working on that may take one more, one more displaced department that's going to have to come out of this building in the next two to three years and, and find a more permanent solution for it. Of course, we could go down the road and building a courtroom, but only needing something two days a week, that's a very expensive building for not full-time use.
Could the seating there now with the current pews handle the capacity that we currently utilize right now in here?
No.
Okay, so how much over do we have now?
Well, we would, you know, the, the, it probably is fifty percent of the capacity of this room.
Okay.
But what you tinker with is not necessarily how you stuff more people in the room, you know, it might be one of those things where we have to look at it from a perspective of, you know, an additional Friday session, or, you know, frankly, there's nothing that says that there's anything mandated in the law that within the time, from the time you get a ticket to the time you're in court, there's not, no requirement that says it has to be thirty days or less. Frankly, in some capacity, sixty and ninety days might be more time for people to get ready to come to court. So, you know, it's, there's a, there's, there'll be a balance there, and I believe we'll be able to schedule through it, that it'll either mean that you're, instead of coming this week, you're next week because our dockets are a little bit further out, or, or we'll just handle additional calendars.
Yeah, but you're still dealing with the same volume.
Yeah. You are, you are, but if you add a calendar, you can, so if you add an additional court time, you can have more, or the other thing is, you just don't get into court as quick, because your same volume, you just, you, you get to you in forty-five days instead of thirty.
So I assume you stated there's a kind of a ten-year moratorium on Alpharetta doing anything. Do they have any specific plans of building a court?
I met with Mayor Bellisle, and I don't want to put words in Mayor Bellisle's mouth, but I'll, I'll tell you, I was there when he said it, he said they have a three hundred million, they have three hundred million dollars worth of capital projects on a list, and a court facility, because they have one that functions today that they own, doesn't make it very high on that list. So there is no plan at this point as to a location or a date, which is why Bob said that, you know, it really made sense that if we were going to do this, you know, let's, let's start with an initial term of five years with five one-year extensions, or something along that line, so that we, so that if you're going to make an investment, you know it's for a long time, and that if we're going to form an agreement with you, we feel comfortable that it's going to be for some time as well, so that we don't go and invest fifty thousand dollars in interior build-out to a building to have them say, two years from now?
Right.
That it's a, not a good idea.
Yeah, well, I guess the point that I was getting at is we have a design for public safety building, which includes court facilities there. So it, you know, I would think within ten years, we'd probably bring that project on We could possibly value engineer some of that space out of that building, if we want. And after ten years, if Alpharetta decides to build something over there, I think you and I have talked about it before, is possibly partner with them to share a court's building and be in the same situation that we're proposing here in using their facilities. That's something I'd, I'd like to keep on the table anyways, at least, at least looking at the plans for our public safety building, considering the fact that we do, or we are renting space, leasing space from that.
Agreed, agreed. That is a topic that I have on my list to talk about. To have that discussion, though, there's some things I want to talk with the council about that I really want to talk to them about in executive session first. So on that topic, maybe we could do that next week at the meeting, if we can do an executive session on, on land acquisition, I want to bring some ideas to the council.
The space that is currently occupied here by the courts, would you be able, I mean, not the courts itself, but the court staff, would you be able to reuse that space in other ways?
I think we would, and I think once there's the move out of the main, once there's the move out of the main part of the building, and we kind of collapse upon ourselves down in this end, and the council's not here any longer, and the court is not here in this room any longer, I even think that this room has almost, I almost equate it to transition space, that as we move over to our new city hall building, it'll be nice to have a space that we can not have to move everything over to that new building right off the bat. I mean, I almost envision this to, to be like a document scanning central for the period of time, so we don't have to move all of our paper records from this, this building over to city hall, that this, that this becomes the place that we do some of that work. In that period of time that we just have a certain number of square feet until we can, we can get out. I can tell you that this building just changed hands, it's under, well, I said, it, I'd say it just changed hands, it's under contract after an auction, I don't know what it's under contract for. I do know that I was called last week trying to determine if our needs had changed at all, because when you negotiate- if our needs had changed at all, because when you negotiate these leases, you try to pick a target, and then, and then you try to hit the target, all the same while that you have to have enough term to the lease that you can get a reasonable lease rate. That was how we ended up with this April of two thousand seventeen and September of two thousand nineteen thing. Do I wish that September two thousand nineteen could be a little bit earlier? What I know now in two thousand fifteen, probably so. What I knew when we were negotiating in two thousand thirteen and two thousand twelve weren't so certain as to what the economy was going to do, and that's why we, we entered into the contract that we did for the lease extension. I don't know exactly where I was going with this point other than to say, yes, those dates seem a little bit out there, and I think we could be prepared to be out of here sooner, based upon what I know today. But it is what it is, and I don't think that having a new landlord, you know, I've kind of offered out there, that if the word on the street was that they'd like to have the space back because they had a tenant that wanted a larger space, that we would potentially, with enough notice, be a willing, a tenant willing to vacate earlier. But I don't, the, the penalties attached to vacating on our accord before two thousand nineteen don't seem to outweigh the benefit.
Do we have a sublease agreement in our-
We can. If we choose to, we can. All right, we talked a little bit about court. Now that I move to the police page, I think y'all need about, you know, seventy-two questions for Chief Crokov in his first year here as a, the police chief. Scour this one really close.
I already came up with mine last.
But even though it's, it's a longer, it's a, it's a longer list of, of maintenance and operating expenses, I can tell you the chief's indicated to me that he, he's got some ideas on how to streamline it, so those will be coming forward. Do I?
Right.
Oh, yeah, one of the things I will talk about real quick between police and fire while we're here is a funding line that moves us towards replacing fifty percent of our mobile and portable radios. This was something that was anticipated, it was anticipated as a part of the Public Safety Communications Project that we've been talking about for several years. We need to take our radios from being CDMA compliant to TDMA compliant. And I, I've now dazzled you with as much as I understand about the technology behind that. But what basically that means to the end user is that our system is built with a sufficient number of talk paths, that if we, that we will have the right-sized system amongst all four cities with TDMA compliant radios. There's, every year, there's a federal mandate that seems to come out that says, by two thousand seventeen, you'll have to be TDMA compliant. By two thousand seventeen, you'll have to do, well, that two thousand seventeen, then in sixteen will become eighteen, and in seventeen will become nineteen. And that's historically what has happened, is this TDMA mandatory deadline has been pushed out into the future. We will recognize value with any of the radios that we have to replace. We haven't bought any new radios in the last several years that aren't TDMA compliant. So, we still have the original deployment radios that would be CDMA. It means they don't function on this TDMA system. Again, I'm way out of my comfort zone with the technology behind this, but we have eight talk paths in the whole radio system, meaning that between all four cities, eight people can have their radio, they can push a button, and as long as not, there's not nine pushing the button at the same time, nobody will get a busy signal. There's some fancy algorithms that say how many talk paths you need. You know, if we were Atlanta, you'd need more talk paths than eight, probably. But the goal is so that when anybody keys up their radio in Alpharetta, Roswell, Sandy Springs, and Milton, that they are able to get to the dispatch center without hearing a steady and continuous tone. The, the, a busy signal on a police and fire radio, especially when you need to not get a busy signal, is one of those things you just hope you don't get. What moving to TDMA technology does is it takes the radio from functioning, system functioning as though it has eight talk paths to though it has sixteen talk paths. So, it doubles the capacity of the system. What that means is that our system would then perform not only with us on it, but when the authority sought to build the system, it sought to build the system that would allow in future years subscriber units on the system to offset the revenue, to offset with revenues that pay for the operation of the system. It was almost that build a system that's robust enough for our cities, but then also you'd be able to approach a Dunwoody, or be able to approach a Forsyth County and say, or be able to approach the hospital, or the school police, or anybody who might want to become a user on the system, and there are those people out there, that then the authority can start to function as a business and try to offset some of what we pay for its, its ability to function by finding subscribers to subscribe to the system and bring revenues to the table. So, we designed the system such that it wasn't overdesigned, but we need to transition our radios to this, this TDMA thing. We're going to try to bite off fifty percent of the radios that need to be replaced this year with fifty percent next year. I can tell you that that is on the, it's, in keeping with what the other cities and the authority have done, but is almost a little slower than everybody else has done. I think Roswell's completely done at this point with the conversion to TDMA. I think Alfred is taking it kind of in a, in a model like we are where they're doing some and then doing another. But we're certainly not, we're not replacing equipment that is just for the sake of replacing equipment, that's what it's for. We will recognize the value in the equipment that we can sell. There's a lot of places that would appreciate these, the radios that aren't TDMA compliant. Not many people are functioning on a system that actually has that capability. So, they, they do have value and will, and will retain or get that value out of them. But that's one of the bigger, if there's a bigger project that we elected to try to get behind us, or at least largely behind us this year, it was that project.
Where exactly is that in the budget?
Is that going from three hundred and twelve thousand to a million seven? Is that under Public Safety Communications Police?
Last page of the police budget.
Under-
Under Motorola radios.
Motorola radios, gosh.
So, it looks like, see, the police chief came in, he asked for five thousand, and I added a hundred and sixty-five thousand.
Okay.
It's the only place in the budget you'll see that, too, right?
Yes, sir. I, I want to say we do, you know, police have the most radios of the two public safety departments because they're, each officer has a portable radio and a mobile radio, where each station has four radios in the fire station. So, they don't take their radios home, because we have the officers go home and, and they can go home in uniform. It's appropriate for them to continue to have those radios when they leave here, so that they don't happen upon something and can't communicate.
So, how many total radios are we talking about?
This is forty.
And there are eighty total?
In the neigh, we, we, the chief is giving me the list, but it's in the neighborhood. It might be eighty-one, eighty-two, but it's, it's-
Round numbers.
Yeah, correct.
And that's a hundred and seventy thousand, a hundred and seventy-one thousand?
That's right.
Four thousand two hundred and seventy dollars per radio.
I have priced radios recently.
We got a very recent invoice based on that.
That's actually down from deployment dollars, believe it or not. So, I don't know if, any questions on that? In the fire department's budget, you'll see that in the fire department, Motorola radios, I want to say we're replacing fourteen, which would, nineteen? Nineteen. I do know that even though I got the number wrong, I do know that what that does is it replaces all of the frontline radios in the fire department. So, those that the firefighters on the street would be using in the stations. Correct?
They're a little more expensive, too.
They're, and, yes, fire, so you're not going to see forty-two seventy because they have a ruggedized radio. And how much are they per?
Five thousand.
Whatever it is, it's worth it because the first house fire you go into with a non-ruggedized radio and you burn it up, it doesn't have any value.
Five thousand two eighty?
How much?
Hold on a second. I think it's five thousand.
It's fifty-six hundred.
Tell you just a second what his notes done. He had fifty-eight hundred in here.
Fifty-eight.
That's one-ten, two-hundred.
What's the lifespan? What, I mean, other than them getting burned up? Do you plan, I mean, is it a ten-year total technology? Will it catch up?
Typically, technology outpaces it, yeah.
What would you, I mean, is there any guess that how long, I mean, are we still running on deployment-
Oh, yeah.
-project radios?
Yeah, and it's, some of it is what the technology internal to the radio is. So, if we stay with seven hundred megahertz being the standard, with seven hundred megahertz digital radio technology, you know, there might be a radio that in fifteen years from now, if that's still the technology we're on, that would still work on that system, what you'll see is that over time, they just get smaller, lighter, you know. And they've gone from where they're kind of like sticks and batteries to where, you know, the battery size has shrunk to almost nothing and they get-
Just like we've seen with phones.
Right. But I would venture to say that technology where it is, that there, there will be something that would, you know, is, they'll be talking into watches or something. I mean, they probably will still be talking over the same system, but there's no telling what are, what it true.
Detracing.
Yeah, what it true. Whether or not they'll have something on their belt with a, with a shoulder mic.
So, is there something here in the fire budget as well for the new ladder?
We'll get to that in the capital project.
Okay, got you.
So, if you go down to the bottom of the second page of fire, you'll see the Motorola radio line.
So, that's twenty radios.
Nineteen radios.
Yeah, nineteen and three-tenths. But is that part of the eighty total radios we have in the system? Or is it eighty in police and forty in-
What you just said.
Eighty police and nineteen.
So, we're going to have the radios replaced for fire.
No, the chief will just, these are the frontline, there, there might be five or six, I guess. Chief, is that right? There's, there's just a handful after these.
There's just a handful after, that's correct. That covers both the line and the fire fires on the trucks.
Got you. Thank you.
So, we'll see a line item for the second half of the police department and a handful of in the fire department next year. Okay. EMS operations, that's still carried because we did have that subsidy back in two thousand thirteen. That doesn't exist at this point. If you've been following along with any of the news, and you may or may not, it, I believe Real Metro was, I say I believe, you know, they were acquired by AMR, which is American Medical Response. So, just stand by for watching what that means to our provider in the zone. We, I don't know that we know at this point, but as we figure it out, we'll let you know.
When was our contract expiring?
We actually don't have a contract with them anymore. You know, we did away with that subsidy because we couldn't get any better of a response time. So, their contract to be able to provide the EMS response in this area is through Region Three EMS Councils. So, it's, they're the zone provider, and we don't select. So, we don't have a contract.
In the public works budget for the salaries, you'll, you'll notice a pretty big jump. That's actually truly not a big jump. We moved some employees from community development into public works. It was Mark Aral, Mark Law, and Jimmy Sanders. That was done after the budget was appropriated last year and improved, and so, we've got to move those dollars overall. Take care of that at the end of the year budget amendments. So, it'll, it won't look like such a jump when you go from two thousand fifteen to two thousand sixteen.
You did that at mid-year, didn't you?
I didn't do it at mid-year.
Working through public works, come up with lots of questions for Carter, too. And even more questions for Jim and Parks and Rec. You'll see the big jump in Parks and Rec is, is mowing and litter pickup, and that's based upon the fact that we're bringing a new park online that's substantially larger than the park that existed. And we're going to structure our agreement a little bit differently than we had when we had the old Bell Memorial Park, because we were responsible for everything outside the fences. And HYA was responsible for everything inside the fences. I think now that we're, got a little bit of skin in the game and that's our asset that's out there, I think it's appropriate that we be in the business of maintaining our park. Now, we might have to structure how our agreement is with the Hopeway Youth Association, because if you were to look at, you know, where those expenses were occurring and who was paying for them, I think we probably in our renegotiation of a contract with HYA, recognize the fact that they no longer have the, no, no longer will have the financial responsibility for the mowing inside the park. So, we need to, I think we need to look at that.
Especially on the artificial turf.
That's a hard one to mow.
Sure. You've done a good job fertilizing it, though.
So, are we going to issue or solicit to do an RFP for specifically maintaining?
Yes.
So, that'll be aside from the contract that Optech has now for.
Optech is, is capable of cutting right of way really well.
Got you.
And, so, I think there's a, as is evidenced, which you'll see in a new initiative that comes up later in the budget, as is evidenced at Freeman Park and Frenchett Park and Bethwell and Broadwell, and we'll talk about Broadwell here in a minute, too, we are making a recommendation to have a higher level of maintenance this year at those parks. If you were to go up here to the corner right now and see if we've got weed fest, and if it's going to be a focal corner that pays tribute to what it pays tribute to, I believe our level, and I believe Jim's recommendation is our level of maintenance, and in a couple of these parks need to be at a higher level than what it looks like to mow right of way.
What, what are we going to appropriate for Providence Park?
It's in the capital budget, and we'll get to that. The number's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we'll show you how, when we get to the capital, I'll show you how we program that out over the future.
Okay. Getting a little bit ahead of the game then. Do we hope to have that up online before mid-year fiscal year? And if so, are we going to take care of the maintenance in this maintenance budget?
We anticipate having the park online, if, if online equals open to the public, that, we, we plan on having it in that condition. You know, there's, we've awarded the contract, which the council approved at the last meeting, to move forward with the fencing and getting the, getting those areas protected. One of the things Carter wants to talk to you specifically about tonight is to get on your calendar, maybe when you're back next week, to go take a look at that building one more time before we make a decision one way or the other as to whether or not it's a, it's a stay or a goer. And then, we will likely put together a Providence Park plan, just like we have our other parks, to, to confirm in fact that what we do there is what the council and the public has interest in doing. Okay?
Chris, are we getting to a point where our, our city staff is at the right level as we're going all these services and parks and things like that? Does Jim need more help, or, I just didn't know, I'm just seeing all this stuff happening, but-
We'll get to that when we get to the new initiatives. One of the things Jim has requested to do is to reclassify the position that Tom Gillum was in-
Good.
-to more of a parks manager, because Tom was really performing at that level as opposed to just a program coordinator.
Sure.
That's why we've held off on staffing that position in hopes that we could go through a reclassification. It has a modest financial implication to it.
Sure.
I think that maybe answers that question. And frankly, y'all, I mean, we are going to have to have a discussion. I don't know that it necessarily comes in this fiscal year. In fact, I don't think it comes in this fiscal year, but it probably comes in the next one. As we bring these facilities online, those come with requirements. And as we bring a city hall online, you know, at the, at the end of the day, you, you know, we're, we're paid for rented space today, but when the light bulb burns out, we call the light bulb repair, repair. You know, we're going to be looking towards some type of a facilities. I mean, once we have as many as we're going to be bringing online, we're going to, you know, we've got enough facilities that we really need to look towards either a person or a company. I'm not saying we necessarily need to, you know, bring staff on board, but-
Sure.
-you know, we are exploring even what it would look like to have a, a property maintenance type company. And I don't know what makes sense yet, but that's not, but double negative, that's not, not on our vision list.
Would we handle that through our general budget here, or would it go through the public buildings authority?
I think because the public buildings authority doesn't, I'm, I'm, now I'm thinking out loud. My gut says we do it out of the general fund because the buildings authority doesn't raise revenue, so therefore it's a hard time to have an expense. We'd have to structure how, we'd have to have a transfer out probably from the general fund to the facilities authority.
And maybe you've gotten into it, Ken, before. How is it handled elsewhere? Do other jurisdictions have these public buildings authorities?
They do, they do. In fact, I had a meeting this morning with the public facilities authority in another jurisdiction, but they are typically not used for this sort of function. That's typically all handled internal to the jurisdiction by way of just their, their parks and grounds and their facilities. The, the PFAs and the authorities are more just the bonding revenue, bonding vehicle.
Moving on to community development, I'm in the general fund. The one enhancement that is in here is we've funded sufficiently on the front end of the fiscal year, I believe, two hazardous waste collection days versus just one. I think that was a request that was made this year, as there was such a desire to have two.
Where is the hazardous waste collection?
It's in a professional phase.
Where is it for this, oh, it's included in professional phase this year? Okay, and then you split it out on its own, okay.
So, that was something to highlight and bring attention to. Nothing else that jumps out at me in that budget that- Economic development has a couple of different changes to it. There's, there's an increase in a couple of us participating in economic development opportunities and visitations of a couple of places that I think through Progress Partners and us, and I'll, I'll have Sarah be able to explain that in better detail, but, you know, we've elected to, to fly the- fly the North Fulton flag for a couple of days, and Alfred has allowed, you know, elected to fly the flag for North Fulton a couple of days, and whoever's in Roswell. So there's a, there's a couple of enhancements here, but it's us coming to the table and engaging in one of the, you know, a trip to Savannah where we staff the table for two days and then hand it off to Peter Tokar, who handles it for two days, who then hands it off to whoever the Roswell person is. So I give Sarah a good bit of credit for getting our name out there and, and kind of, for lack of a better term, rubbing shoulders with the other economic development people in the area so that we're not, so that we're not forgotten. I'll have her do a better job of explaining that as we work through a different, unless you've got notes, we can work.
Sure. She mentioned the New York City spring trip.
We'll have her, because it, it comes with a better explanation when she can do it, because I had a bunch of questions on it in the front end before I'd allow it to be included. And she sufficiently was able to convince me that it, it was dollars well-spent and that there was a return and that we weren't out there doing anything other than kind of holding, finally holding Milton's share of, you know, of, of being at the same table with the rest of the North Fulton cities. If we move to debt service, we don't, we don't have any in fiscal year 16. You'll see debt service payment return in 2017 for this park. It's, it's okay here. Other financing uses, that's just the transfer out to the capital project fund, to the capital grant fund. You're, you're familiar with how that works. And other costs is this year is our contingency that, that we're required as a matter of law to maintain in the budget at $188,264.
Daisy, how's the relationship going with the, the bond that we put out there? I mean, the payments going well, everything, you know?
It's good. We actually haven't drawn on it yet because we've been able to use idle funds. So I should be drawing on that in September.
Okay.
And the debt service payment for that is actually in the capital projects revenue bond fund. And that is going to be around $800,000 a year.
Work through some of the maintenance and operating initiatives. As you know what these are, as these go, these are requests that come from departments or, or if I sense that I'm getting feedback from the council on a topic, I'll, I'll include them myself. But these are maintenance and operating initiatives that would be considered new or new adds to the budget beyond what would currently be captured in the, in the typical general fund. I've talked with a couple of you and maybe not everybody, but the first one there is this green space bond initiative. And, you know, we've had this discussion as to what is the appropriate thing moving forward within this fiscal year? And do we need to do this thing called a green print first before we could do some type of a conservation finance measure? Or do we not? Or what does that look like? And what that looks like is that I know that a green print itself, if we wanted to do one with the trust for public land, if we could figure out how to legally do that, are somewhere between $100,000 and $200,000 is what I have been told by them. And I do know that if we wanted to move forward with a conservation finance measure, that that cost is right in the neighborhood of $37,000. So if you say, okay, so biggest number of both of those categories is $237,000. Recognizing that the $200,000 green pimp was what it cost to do, I think the whole state of Hawaii. So I've got to think that we're probably closer in what, if, if we choose to do one, we're probably in that $100,000 to $150,000 range. And then to add a conservation finance initiative on top of that, I kind of rolled it all up together because it really is kind of rolled together in, under the title of Green Space Bond Initiative and have it in at $200,000. I would be very interested if you feel as though that's too much, not enough, don't think we need to do a green print and are comfortable that we could just start to do a conservation finance initiative if you believe that the community, and it's where I need to rely upon you, if you believe the community energy is sufficient, that there's not the need to do something leading into that conservation finance initiative. There's nothing that says that we have to do a green print along with a conservation initiative. There's nothing that says they can't be done in parallel. There's nothing that says that one can't operate independent of the other. And, but there's nothing wrong with doing them in linear fashion either if we believe that they're both warranted. So give that some thought. I know that's going to be one of those larger cost centers that we'll have to battle through at, at some point. But that was the rationale.
Glenn, let me also say, there are a few of the initiatives in here that do not have detailed worksheets behind it, because as we were going through and looking through the budget, we thought of something and stuck it in there and tried to get back to it and just have it had a good chance to get back to and give you some detail on what it is. So we're just going to go through each one of those tonight and talk about it.
And then we'll get you the backup sheet.
Yes.
Now, there is a request of finance to fund a part-time finance clerk. That at this point, I have not recommended we fund. Infrastructure design implementation for new city hall building. This is something that comes out of Dave's department in IT. That there are some hours, we believe, that are going to be needed to start to put together the framework that transitions our technology from this building into the new city hall building. So this would be something that would be over and above those costs which come out of the department. And the thought process behind it is that we'll need these to be able to move from this building to our new city hall. In the Human Resource Department, a market competitiveness survey and study.
Did you clear that, clear that up for me? Say that again? And we're looking at $72,000?
Yeah, this is, this is something that comes out of Dave's department that is for project hours with our company that we have that would put together a transition team to move the, to move us from this building and our technology platform here to get us up to speed in our new, in our new city hall, new city hall crap. I could give, Dave, provide more detail if that's what you are interested. But is there anything that I have missed in giving that assessment, Dave?
Yeah, basically what we're looking at is that over the last, over the last five years, we've had two circuits connecting our different facilities together here. As we move to the new city hall, we're going to be more than doubling the amount of infrastructure we have. So we're going to be bringing the fire stations together. We're going to have a new city hall as we're going to have. And so effectively, we're going to be doubling the amount of infrastructure IP addresses. We're going to be increasing the number of switches and stuff that we'll need. So just like increasing the size of a neighborhood, we're going to be increasing the requirements that we have to support that.
But you're just talking about the design of the system, not the hardware.
That will be the project, specifically. That won't include any additional hardware costs or anything like that. A lot of that's going to be captured in the building in the city hall. It's going to be just engineers on staff to basically design a bigger bucket for us to put all of our stuff in.
Okay, moving into human resources, we're recommending a market competitiveness survey and study. This will be the first independent look that I believe we're, we're due to make at our city on a, across the board basis, just to either identify issues or confirm that from a market competitive standpoint, that we are competitive. I can tell you that Roswell did one this year. Alfreda did one two years ago. It's one of those, it's one of those things where I believe that this, we don't, we, we need to do one as well. And what Alfreda determined was that they, by doing a market study, that they had an attractive recruitment and, and retention package. So they confirmed that what they had was within the market and was, it was more or less a confirmation that they were competitive in the, in the workforce or in the, in the marketplace. And Roswell just did one this year that caused them to have to make a couple of appropriate changes. But that's one of the big things that we want to make sure that we don't lose sight of is that we want to be an attractive employer. We want to retain good talent. We've got good talent and I want to make sure that we are able to keep it. So prior to making any recommendation for any changes, I think it's appropriate that we do take this independent look and compare ourselves to what we compete with for, for good talent. One item that came out of the Innovation Engagement Department, and it came out of there because there was probably no, no other place to put it. I think I was the one that suggested we look at something like this. As we, in many of our circumstances and our events from, you know, all during the year, we rent the sound system. And for some of the larger events like Memorial Day, we probably will still rent the sound system because it comes not only with the system itself, but somebody that knows how to operate. So that when the speakers start to squelch, somebody knows what to do with it. Having the pavilion, though, now, and having the fact that we have, you know, for example, the Bell Memorial ribbon cutting that's going to happen on September the 11th, it would be neat to have amplified sound there without having to go through the process of renting. For those of you, and I think everybody was, at the ribbon cutting of the library, you saw the difference between a legitimate sound system outside on that meadow underneath that tree. And no matter where you went out there, you were able to hear what was being said by the people that were saying it. I don't have to point to a couple of different places here recently, but the opening of the birdhouse is probably an example. When I say we need to have a sound system because we got, you know, we got a nice podium there, but I don't know that half of the seniors heard much of what happened at the birdhouses ribbon cutting. So this was kind of a, a very modest expense wise that I think gives us a, a good bang for our buck.
Is it we're just not running big enough sound systems, or we just need to own our own big one? I mean, that's...
Well, there's probably environments that we're capable of, the magnitude of the event not being so big, that a right-sized system that's portable and owned makes sense versus setting up for Memorial Day when we need to cover beyond our capability of, of an intimate ribbon cutting or an intimate groundbreaking, then that's when we would go to the, to the more professional version. We've already talked about relocation of court facility annual lease. That's what's captured in that $36,000, which is what I talked about, the $3,000 per month if we, if we move forward that. I had a meeting with our staff today and I did as good a job describing what this crime site imager was, you know, staff meeting that I'm probably going to do right now. But this is something in the police department. And since the initial deployment of the Milton Police Department, the day-to-day operations of the Criminal Investigations Division have identified equipment needs that are essential for quality investigations and recovery of forensic evidence. One of those items is this, is this item. It has, if, if Searchie's the one that's selling it, it has something to do with fingerprints. So it takes advantage of the different UV light reflected properties of the fingerprint service in which it's located. Long story short, this is a recommendation out of the police department that would enhance our ability to investigate crime and gather forensic, forensic stuff as it relates to, to fingerprints. That's one of those things that if that's the, if that's the sole operating initiative request that the police department came with, I'm pretty certain that it, it would have a date that they've researched. Public education program initiative, as we move into the fire, fire department, the $4,003 is for Sparky the Fire Dog. It's not a real dog. And I called it Sparky the Spark Plug earlier today by mistake. And it, it basically is a public education outreach tool that we take into schools. It's a dog costume for somebody to wear that is marketed as Sparky the Fire Dog. And it would be an enhancement to our public education outreach campaign. One of the big things the fire department does is to be in the schools. And this is something that would enhance those efforts.
It's a $4,000 dog suit. So we're looking at?
That is correct. That is correct. We can have a...
Carter?
No, I was going to have the chief. You know, Carter, wear it.
Back on the police.
Sure.
Have we considered personal cameras?
We have. And the chief and I talked about that. He can certainly speak for himself on that. He believes, we had them funded last year. And then we ran into some issues where we were, we were trying to figure out what the interpretation of the courts were going to be. And the, and the initial reaction to body worn cameras was that they would protect the officer. They would protect because they'd capture what was really happening right there in real time. And the courts gave a couple of interesting opinions and or rulings early on that was questioning their compliance with the Fourth Amendment because of going into somebody's house and having to seek to gain permission to record within somebody's dwelling before being able to enter. What does that look like? They say, no, I don't allow you to record. Do you turn the camera around? Or do you, so there's a lot of things that the law needed to catch up with the technology. The reason it's not funded in this budget is, is I believe that the chief believes that if in fact we move forward with a body camera initiative, that there will be other funding sources available that he would like to pursue in the form of, of grants or other, other things. You can see in the fire department, there's a couple of safety items and one item that's a, deals with stroke of life support. I'd let Chief Edgar speak on either of those if you have questions. And finally, in that, in that cost center is landscape improvements for stations 41 and 43. This resides within the fire department, is more of a Carter request than it is fire department request, but I think it's shared jointly. That those two fire stations are kind of our gateway entry points on two of our main corridors. And this goes back to the whole Optech is good at cutting right of way. I don't know if you're satisfied. I don't believe we are, that we're matching the image that Milton has for its facilities in, in either of those two stations where they, where they reside. I would envision this to enhance with, you know, flower of pine straw, enhance, you know, enhance mowing, et cetera, to, to allow those gateway facilities to match what we want them to look like. If you have any questions about that line item specifically, Carter would be a good one to refer those to.
Are we going to address either replacement or renovation of 42?
Yes. Capital budget. We'll be addressing that here just very shortly. In Parks and Recreation, the first line item, Broadwell Pavilion improvements. You know, we tried for a year or season, the food trucks and farmer's market thing. It, I think it turned in at the very beginning of the season, it was food truck and farmer market. And then we might've gotten to farmer's market, but we lost the truck. And it just, it's very difficult to bring in an event like that online that competes with a very large one of those that happens earlier in the day in our, you know, city just down the street that's within miles of each other. We've really seen some use of the pavilion and some desired use of the pavilion. I don't know if you had the opportunity to drive by on Saturday night, but there was almost 300 people there on Saturday night for an event, which was just amazing to see that kind of a use. And it was funny, I was standing there, nobody, you know, I had snuck in. The people that were there as a part of the event, somebody made the comment of, they were from Roswell, they made the comment of, isn't it better to be in Milton? And I said, heck yeah, it is. But that was largely driven by this pavilion that, that exists there. So some of the improvements that we would, that we would suggest. Number one is we would suggest irrigation and grass. We didn't do that early on because the thought was that we were going to be driving food trucks on it. And if we were going to be driving food trucks on it, it didn't make sense to put a bunch of grass down. If, we believe that that space is being used, it will likely be used for more reunion-ish, party-ish, city event type place. It's a, we believe it's appropriate to put in grass, but we don't believe it's appropriate to do that without the proper irrigation. So that's one of the requests. The second request is for some ceiling fans. And it's one of the things that we had no idea was, I mean, you could build a pavilion and it's not until it opens up and you see where the orientation of the sun is and what the heating does to it. It gets quite dense underneath the pavilion. It was quite dense on Saturday night with that many people packed under it.
What would they do? 300 people? How could they even fit under it?
It was, well, they didn't. It spilled out into, there were people cooking food and there was kids playing, you know, yard games. And it was a, it was quite an event. And it was just a rental. So, I mean, it was, you know, it wasn't a city event. It was somebody that just came in and rented it. We look at, at some fans and as an option for the Broadwell Pavilion. We also look, and if you read the budget, you'll see that we have, and we're trying our hardest to, to put these on hold, but we have some initial assessments that a couple of those trees that are on that site are in a state of decline. And we had an assessment by an independent outside Arbor's firm do some, do some study to see what the root, the structure looked like, what the recommendation was. We did have a fairly substantial branch fall in the last month from one of the trees at the back of the site. And, yeah, I'm not rushing to take those trees down. I know you don't want to, I, I don't want to take those trees down, but we're probably going to have to put some preventative maintenance into them so that we also avoid the liability exposure that comes with having a tree that may be in a state of decline on our public property site. So I've got some earmarked money in there that if they were to have to be either maintained or in the unlikely or unfortunate event, probably not unlikely, unfortunately, but in the unfortunate event that they eventually have to come out, we need to be prepared to do that.
Is there a timeline as we will know for certain the action we need to take?
You know, there's some that, there's one thought that would suggest that they're in a state of decline at the... You know, there's some that, there's one thought that would suggest that they're in a state of decline at this point, to the point that now is that.
Now we're taking down.
You know, I've encouraged our folks and, you know, because it's hard to walk the walk of being a city that loves trees and then be the first to go take down big trees on our property, that we should try any and all things before we get to that. Even pruning backs so that the weight is less or root injections that if we're going to be in it, we've got to be in it, not just in it, because we tell other people that we love our trees, but that we love our trees too. So, you know, we're continuing to assess. I'll be happy to share if anybody has interest with the report that Davy Tree did for us that would give you some kind of idea as to what the condition of the trees are. And then we just, all we can do is watch nature now. The fact that we haven't had any rain in the last, you know, couple of weeks until today.
Back on the irrigation system. The decimal point happened to slide to the right one place. $35,000, we could drill a well and put a pump in there.
Carter, Jim, I'll have to defer on you in this, in this request. It shows, I believe that's grass and irrigation.
Yes, that is grass and data irrigation.
I'm sure we put it out at the bit.
We will.
Certainly we will. I needed to come up with a budget number and so we put it in there, but yes, we will put it out at the bit.
If we're finished with Broadwell Pavilion, I got a couple of things.
Please.
Heard some folks in the, that use that and would like to use it more at some of our city events and everything. That they would like to see some sort of little small playground type of structure put up and whether it be one of the two that we've got in storage from Bell Park or something more fitting. And the other thing, the openings in the fence are open. And when you have events there, when the road's not closed, the small kids running in and out or anything like that, some sort of, you know, gate, gates along the fronts and the sides, I think would be something we really need to look at there as well.
You know, we talked about that and I know Carter and I talked about having gates that were, and replacing now the chain with a gate now that we're not going to do the food trucks there. And also fencing off the boxes, the utility boxes that are in that top right corner. That even though they're probably, I said probably, even though they are safe for the public to interact with, probably not the right thing to be used as the playground. I probably just described as well why we haven't rushed to put a playground on the site underneath those trees. It's because I want to be very careful that we don't create a condition that's not favorable. And if you look at the other side of the site, that substantial fall, by the time you put it towards the back of the sites, you really are below grade or below grade from the street. So, yeah, we haven't lost sight of the playset. One of the things that I'm hoping that is acceptable, at least that we, we take a look at the playset that goes in at the Bell Memorial Park, because there's one key, there's one key feature that's at the new Bell Memorial Park that might be nice to have as our consistent play piece across Milton that would almost kind of be the Milton play piece. So if we can get that park open, then we'll meet out there as a group and see what, see what might make sense. And it might be able to fit in on that site and also blend in to some degree. So it doesn't become the focal point of the site, but the pavilion still does.
But I do think, you know, in the meantime, the gates that, you know, can be closed or left open until they need to be closed or something like that is something that we need to really explore.
Pitch modifications are included in that.
Okay.
Thank you. The Birdhouse alarm system, in digging into that, what I really think that the senior center staff has asked for is a door chime, that they don't like to be in that back office and not hear when the doors open. They feel as though they're kind of like sitting ducks back there. I think we can do that with existing resources, if that's really the desire is to have a door chime in that building. One of the things we talked about earlier, and I'll just highlight that this is where it's captured, is landscaping services for city parks. This is the higher level of maintenance for the parks as I specified, Friendship, Freedom, Broadwell and Bethwell. And then we talked a little bit earlier to Matt's question about the reclassification of the coordinator position to that being a parks manager, being somebody that's a higher level and doing more than just scheduling classes, but that would have a job description that we could hold to a, to a higher level of accountability and frankly, more of a deliverable than to an hours worked. And that's where that is captured in this budget. Today, that position remains vacant. So it would be one of those that if this budget approves and adopts, we would just go out and recruit a person to fill that new role. Finally, leading up to the last two, one of the things that I've heard the council say and we've distributed job descriptions, and I haven't received any feedback from council on that job description or on the desire to move forward. But I wanted to make sure that we built a budget that contemplated bringing a conservation project manager on board. This is on a part-time basis. And I shot in the dark at a number because I didn't really know what to put there. That is more than sufficient on a part-time basis than what would be needed for that position. But again, I'm still kind of looking for feedback on that job description that we sent out to see if that was in keeping with the council's vision for the conservation project. I envision it, I guess if you say, what do you envision? I envision it to be kind of the collecting point for all of the conservation initiatives, not just, not one or this one or that one, but it's kind of the collecting point and almost that face up. If you differ, if you differ in your assessment to that, or frankly, I already disagree, I am open to that feedback. I just wanted to make sure that it was captured. One final, and I believe this based upon our job assessments, one reclassification of the city positions is necessary and appropriate this year based upon the functions and duties of the job and what they, how they classify out, and that is the city architect's position from grade 36 to grade 38. And I'm happy to show you where and why we feel that is appropriate. That's the position that's occupied by Bob McShane.
How does someone increase their classification? Is it by experience done or training that's been done or perceived experience that will be coming?
We kind of take, and it would be great if you wanted to sit down with Sam and see how that's done, but we take a job task analysis based upon the duties that are being assigned, what the job description says, and then where that fits within pay equity within the city as well as where those skill set fit with other positions, that would be other comparable positions. And it then grades out to a specific grade. Some places go so far as to have steps in grade. We don't have that, that it becomes very bureaucratic very fast where you all of a sudden are step two, grade six, or step three, grade seven. We can thank the federal government for something as elaborate as that. These kind of more fit within our, within our grade classification scale. If we would move quickly to the next tab, which will show, and you can go through this at your convenience as a special events fund. If you, you'll, if you remember, you know that the dollars, the revenues that come into the special events fund come in through the hotel motel tax. Some of that is transferred into the general fund and some of that is captured here. I'd like, as you, as time allows, if you wouldn't mind just going through each event and making sure that an adequate amount of money has been allocated, particularly if it's an event that you play a large role in, and I hate to highlight one, but it's, I think it's very obvious everybody would agree that, you know, I would want Bill to look real closely at one more day. Do I?
And Veterans Day.
And Veterans Day. So take, take a look through that and I don't, nothing that jumps out at me as being out of wack or crazy, but a little bit of an extra set of eyes. The next tab shows the 911 fund. These are the funds that we receive from wired and wireless revenues, wired and wireless phones. It would be tab six.
Back on the special events fund, here you have, one, two, three, four, five, six items down. You have Milton Roundup sponsor for revenues.
That should be Crab Apple Fest.
Sorry, I didn't change that.
Is there a way we could get for each of these special events, an estimate to the number of people who participated? I mean, I know we can't get exact, but kind of an estimate so we kind of know how much is.
Yeah, I'll send, we'll send it to you.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, we've got that.
I think it's nice to know how much you spend for.
Per person.
Yeah.
Per capita.
I need to also point out that unfortunately didn't print, I didn't have my print parameters set, but there are three new events that they are proposing. One is the Hometown Jubilee, which we actually had this year. And the other was Pancake Breakfast, which we also have with Santa out at the fire station. And then Illitering Festival, something that Better Together is putting together for us. So I will send those updated spreadsheets out to you guys.
That's not in here.
They didn't make it in, I'm sorry, I didn't stretch the parameters.
Now, the Spring Craft Beer and Wine Festival, is that something that we're going to look at for next year?
That was something that was based upon a large sponsor being secured. We're still looking for that, so we carried it as an event last year. I'd enjoy the council's feedback as to whether or not you think that's Milton, a desired type of Milton event. I could almost see that it'd be a very similar event to Crab Apple Fest. I mean, especially now because we allow, I mean, this I guess would be focused on craft beer and wine, but since we allow that, I don't.
It would be nice to have something in the spring, Crab Apple Fest always in the fall. It'd be nice to have something in the spring that really brought everybody together.
I would think it would be Hometown Jubilee.
Yeah.
The Hometown Jubilee.
Yeah.
That's the one you don't have.
Yeah, okay.
You can look long and hard.
And the Jubilee was great. I remember it was a great first.
For a first year.
Yes. Very well done.
Very well done.
Very well.
Okay, if we go to 911 fund, I'll just highlight this, that these are those funds that we do receive. And these are the funds that pay for our dispatch relationship with the city of Milton. Very restrictive as to what these funds can be used for and we use them for that intended purpose. Hotel motel tax fund, this will just show you where we show the revenues in. And then if you go down, you'll see that there's a transfer out to the general fund of $20,000 and a transfer out to the special event fund of $7,000. One pays for website maintenance and the other pays for the special events that we pass through and highlight. Now we start to move into the capital projects fund. This is easier if you would flip to tab eight and if you're visual one and can get to this colored spreadsheet. What we have here is by department, those things that are, were previously allocated, what are anticipated or requested addition is to it in the 2016 plan. That is the plan we are in right now, or the plan that we're considering. And then we show that we go out for seven years. So let me walk through these and we'll see what kind of questions you have. If we get to an area that is scratched through, the reason that that's scratched through is we believe that that project is complete, although we aren't ready yet to necessarily, you know, we're starting to try to capture projects begun and ended so that we don't lose sight of the fact that we are able to tell the story of what we've already done. But that's why we wanted to show them on here as projects done but complete. You can see the city hall is the top project. It's planned to increase this year by a million 293 and in 2017 by a million 293. It will be built and occupied in 2017 and that will be a total project fund. Land conservation, this is another one we started last year where we started to earmark some dollars towards land conservation. We just extended this out an additional year. This would be the dollars that would build over time that if all of a sudden, I think the intent was is that if there was a great property that came online that the council wanted to look at, that it just came out of the blue, not one of those that we would have gone out and sought to acquire, that there would be some funds potentially available if, if that condition presented itself. Vehicle replacement reserve, that's a, we don't have a large vehicle fleet in our general administration, so that modest increase allows us to continue to buy vehicles as we need to in general admin without having to lease and or purchase with debt. Public Safety Communications, you can see that this, we're on the tail end of bringing this radio system online. The authority has moved towards retaining one independent contractor to run the system. This will be the last year that we have project expenses at the amount that we do and we will then simply go into a project maintenance mode, which was as anticipated, which would then look very similar to what we did when we would invest in Fulton County's radio system on a per radio basis.
Chris, why, can we see what was the actual total cost spent on some of these items that have been completed?
On the ones that had the red, the red lines through it?
They're actually on the individual spreadsheet.
So you have to go back to the individual spreadsheets to see how much was actually.
I also have another column in there. I hid it because it looked a little confusing once you looked at it, but I can, I can send you the spreadsheet, the summary spreadsheet with a column that shows the remaining balance that can roll over. I can also add another column in there that shows you what was spent.
I think it would be helpful to know what we had projected to spend on things compared to what was actually spent on them.
I think it'd be better if I sent that out to you individual, I mean, as a council, instead of having that pushed out to the public. Because it gets really visually confusing if you look at it that way, but I can sort of do that.
I mean, I'm assuming like the intersection of Birmingham and Providence, so it was a negative amount for 2016. That's because that was that much we did not have to use, okay.
Okay, so as you walk through these, and I don't have to go down by them line by line, we can certainly do that. What you see, the ones that jump out at me is this police court facility. We talked about it earlier, it would be programmed to be built in 2019 or for 2019 Occupy, which matches when we have to be out of this facility. That's why you're seeing that where it is. None of this is new from last year, the LiveFire Training Facility gets the funding that it needs to go beyond the planning and put it into a real project. And this year, you can see that there is a, Bill asked about the Station 42 replacements. You can see that we're in planning and design this year in 2016 and then have funded that replacement in 2017. Somebody else asked about the apparatus and vehicle replacements. You can see that they're previously allocated and carried a million six based upon the formula for the, for the replacement. You can see the requested funding out for the seven years of $350,000 increasing to four, then to 450, based upon our replacement reserve.
Say to include interest costs?
If, if we.
We finance, we're trying to.
If we finance. We could finance. This contemplates that we don't, so it contemplates that interest is zero. Couple of highlights of public works, obviously you can see the bridge replacement program continues to build. I think the next ones that we will look at are the bridges that are across the north end of the city of Birmingham Road. I think I'm right there. We've got this Northeast Connector Road and unfortunately, some of the funding splits in 2018 and 2020, I'd hope that we could do that back to back years. But as in prior years, based upon the driving of this facility coming offline and having to locate the police somewhere, I didn't want to give you a capital plan, a capital project list that, once we went to the bottom line, just we thought to be not doable. If you put these things out there, you really have to believe that the dollars would be available to do it. And that's the best way that we could come up with earlier to figure out how to make the plan actually be a plan that I can sit here and tell you, yes, I think this is a very workable plan. You can see that the next intersection that we start to work on is Fremontville, Providence and Birmingham. Those two intersections, I think we're looking at together because one kind of feeds into the other. And you can see that that's programmed for funding out three years. And then obviously we'll look to the CTP to see what becomes the next roads that we, the next intersections that we look at. Hopewell and Hamby looks to be the one that comes out in 2021 and then potentially Hopewell and Thompson in 2022. That may change based upon the CTP that we just awarded to Kibbe and Warren, those might flip. Other intersections might become priorities, but rather than trying to guess what that is, we'll go through the planning study to figure out what that is and then we'll have the capital plan reflected according to the outcome of that plan. If the council feels passionately about aligning priorities based upon intersections, that might just be because you think we need to do one before we need to do the other. And even though it might not from a crash, crash data perspective or engineering perspective rate higher than something else, you all could certainly direct us that you're, that you'd like to look at something in a different.
I mean, I guess for like the Bethany and Providence, we show 60,000, which I assume is the design in 2017, but we don't ever show it being.
Built.
Funded. It just seems like if you design. It just seems like if you designed it in 2017, you're not going to have the funds to afford it till at least 2023, then whatever you design may no longer be relevant five years later.
Yeah, there was an existing concept plan that was already approved on that particular intersection.
About 15 years ago.
Yeah, right?
Yeah, I worked on it.
Yeah, and they bore a roundabout there.
Yes.
So part of that was to bring that concept line back up to date, and then we will look for additional funding from other sources.
Okay.
And we'll look at that through the CTP and see how it ranks out this year, too. So it may drop off the list entirely, or it may move up the list based on the latest update that we're doing.
If we put the money in for the design of some of these, would it allow us to more quickly go after other funds as they become available? If there are already, designs already there, or how does that work?
It does, as long as you follow that procurement process, then we can pick up federal funding or GDOT funding as it becomes available. We're just not seeing those call for projects come out very frequently right now.
On the Hopewell-Thompson intersection, do we have traffic data up to date on that intersection right now? I guess what I'm getting at is, when, after we open Bell Memorial again, I can see that there's going to be increased traffic at that intersection, and being offset intersection like that.
We do have current data on that. We looked at that as part of the component of the park plan, when the original park was designed. Didn't warrant any additional improvements to that intersection at that time. And so it will go into the hopper, just like all the other intersection projects, and be evaluated through the CTP. But we did do a separate traffic study with that, with the original park design.
On your stuff, too, Carter, am I reading it correctly? Such as the intersection Freemanville, Providence, and Birmingham, those two projects, that's the two combined, is it?
Yes, sir, so that'd be two intersections.
So, so that would be built in 2018, whatever that, whatever, is that what that is?
The way that works is, the first two years would fund design and right-of-way acquisition, with the second year being the construction of the Freemanville, Providence.
Okay.
And then we'd move up and do the construction at Freemanville and Birmingham.
Okay, so we plan on having those both completed in 2018, if that's where...
Is that the last year of the funding?
Yeah, the last year.
Yes, sir.
And then, just as an aside, if the intersection builders just talking about, what's, what's the work that's going on there now?
It's related to the Hardeman to go work.
Okay, that figures out.
Traffic was backed, backed up past Trophy Club from the Hopewell-Birmingham Road today. Coming down here. It's crazy.
We have pavement management, I mean, just to highlight again, and for the record, we have pavement management in at the same cost that we've had in prior years. That will couple with LMEC funding, and we'll maintain a comparable level of repaving in this budget as we have in prior years. We have dollars for repair of stormwater structures, and some of the things you're used to seeing in sidewalk construction and repair, re-stripping existing roads. Sidewalk construction is one that I'd like to hear from you on, as we move through this budget process. You know, isn't it $100,000 right now? You know, we're not keeping up with the Joneses, but I know there are cities in the south allocated a million in sidewalk enhancements in Alpharetta this year. If you'd like to add, if you'd like to add more dollars to sidewalk construction and repair, the only thing I'd ask is that we add it in incremental dollars that actually make real connections, so that, you know, if you have an extra $100,000 around, but it doesn't do anything but take a sidewalk to nowhere and continue it to nowhere, those are not connections we prefer to make. We'd prefer to actually fill total gaps. Do you have some that you can suggest that are, that are, yeah, I know you have, I guess, a priority list, and priorities, $100,000, get through one through five, or whatever?
And $100,000 may be a little bit misleading. We've got about 1.2 million in sidewalk projects that we're currently working on. And so $600,000 of that is currently in the Mayfield Road sidewalks that bring you from Broadwell down to Charlotte. And so there's a couple of different funding sources that we're looking at. We've, we've got the T Project, that is the Mayfield Road. That's $500,000 of funding there. CDBG funds are going to be used to do some sidewalk work on Cogburn, as well as Marta. We still have some remaining funds from Marta that we're doing some work over there. So the $100,000 is a little bit misleading, because we have a number of projects that are going on. They're just funded from a variety of different sources. The two projects we're working on, one is the Mayfield Road, that is the streetscape projects. We're also working on the Big Creek Greenway connection. So if you remember, we're doing a concept study with that. That study takes us really from Cambridge High School all the way over to the Greenway. And so where we've been allocating funds from a local perspective is to work on those segments of Cogburn Road, really to demonstrate that we have some skin in the game. So as funding becomes available for those, we can demonstrate from a local perspective that we've, we're really taking this project to heart. And so most of the funding that we've got programmed out over the next three to four years would be making connections along that Cogburn Road section. So we did some 10-foot wide trail down by the bridge, where we replaced the bridge. The next project that we've just completed the survey on, or we're moving into design, would be bringing that sidewalk up from the bridge, where we ended at the bridge, up to Webb Road. And we've also got a project that we've been working on for a couple of years to continue. So Cogburn makes a 90-degree turn at Webb right there, and goes over to Alpharetta, where Rhodes Plantation is, continuing the sidewalk there, down that section of Cogburn over to Rhodes Plantation. We've had some issues with right-of-way and easement acquisition in that section, so we're having to redesign that to try and accommodate some of the issues that we've had there. And then the next program pieces would basically be filling in the gaps as we work our way up Cogburn, all the way north of Bethany Bend to the Two Neighborhoods, just north of that. Oakstone Glen, I think, is the one that we're trying to get connected to, so there's quite a bit of projects.
We're covering a lot of people that are potentially walking to the schools and everything, I mean, from both Alpharetta and Milton.
Yeah, that piece down Cogburn, where we make the 90-degree bend, would then connect to Alpharetta sidewalk system. That takes it on down further into Alpharetta. We made the connection over on Webb last year, so that began to connect all of those loops. We filled some gaps in around here that really connected the loops in this particular area. So we're really kind of working that sidewalk connectivity from the, from the Highway 9 area here by City Hall up to the north. And we've been making improvements, obviously, over in the Crab Apple area through the Safe Routes to School grant, and the T Grant that we have on Mayfield. So there's quite a few sidewalk segments that are going in, so we've tried to program that into a realistic program over the next three to four years to make a lot of these significant connections.
Perfect. Couple of things that were new from Porter this year in the Capital Projects account is a test of a traffic mobile control center. That is, this year, $9,000, that's just, it basically allows us to almost demo something, correct?
That, that's right. That is kind of the precursor to the larger system, which would allow us to do diagnostics and some repair work from a Bluetooth connection. So instead of getting out to the actual controller, we can see that on a laptop in close proximity to the controller, but would set the stage in the future to be able to do that essentially from the office here. We could monitor the intersections, we could adjust signal timing here. It's basically a smaller version of a traffic control center that you may see. Sandy Springs and Johns Creek operate larger ones, but obviously they have a larger system. So what we wanted to do is get this piece in so that we can see both advantages and limitations of the system before we move it into a larger request for a system-wide implementation.
And you were talking red lights.
Correct.
Yes.
Yes.
Just making sure.
So, Pete, is this a mobile unit that you'd place at each intersection?
It would be, basically, it's an attachment to the controller that we would be able to download, and we would have software component on our laptop. So in this component, you could basically pull up to the signal, or be at least in close proximity to the signal, and be able to run your diagnostics, make some adjustments, without having to leave the vehicle. Ultimately, you could do that from here in the office, too.
We used to call those windshield surveys.
Couple of things, we've got the transportation plan in here, as well as the request for an additional snowplow and salt sand sprayer. We've had enough winter storms over the last several years that we've, we've had to, unfortunately, these will be offset, you know, when you mobilize blunt and pay for them to stand by, and then the storm doesn't come, you know, we're still expending those dollars. Where now, we found this last year, we were pretty effective by mobilizing our own crews. Chief's going to help us figure out, really get a snow, how to attack it. He's going to think that this is comedy. This is comedy.
It's real.
Never seen a school shut down at the predictions.
So if we're going to get a snowplow, what kind of vehicle?
Our Public Works trucks.
We put it on a 250.
In the Parks Department, a utility vehicle for Bell Memorial Park, that's in the Capitol. That was in last year, we defunded it last year. And now the park's coming online, we believe that that's appropriate for this year. Bill, you talked about Providence Park, and there's detail behind this. You can see that our request is, in the first couple of years, is to, is to get just over $300,000 to it. We've got some work that we need to do in the stream that comes down the hill towards the lake, because it is breached. We've got some work, obviously, to do with the facilities that are there, that we need to make a decision as to whether or not they stay or go. And then frankly, we need to figure out what the program looks like for that park. And we've talked, and there's, there's opportunities to partner potentially with a community organization to deliver some programs out there in the form of the YMCA. They've used the park before, and they have a whole lot of interest in bringing that, bringing it back online. I'm not exactly sure what that looks like, but Scott Dahl and I have started those conversations, and I think it would be really, really a neat thing to be able to bring Camp Providence back, at least as its first, maybe first offering there at Providence Park.
Is outward bound, an organization like that feasible to bring into that area, too? Particularly in the, you know, the Torrey section?
Oh, I'm sure, yeah, well, I mean, the limited knowledge that I have of that program is, I would think we'd certainly welcome it into the community, absolutely. The one other thing that you'll see here is Kathy's recommended some additional funding for gateway signage and historic markers. This is to bring, in addition to the gateway signage, kind of a wayfinding sign initiative to our newly forming downtown, as we start to have libraries, and pavilions, and city halls, and courts, and stuff on, online, a wayfinding sign program there that kind of comes and coincides with the new city hall would be a good, would be a good project to have. I'm sorry, I keep looking here for getting all over here, I apologize.
Just keep forgetting me.
I'd like to get into some detail on historic markers, and what our, our plan is there. Still obligated to conform with the state regs on that, or are we going to come up with our own plan?
I'll find that out for you, and see if we are, and maybe we build that into our wayfinding signage in terms of coming up with the design.
That tells me we're not. If you look at some of the signs that exist, like on the Spence House there on Mayfield Road, I mean, that's not in conformance with, it's the big state marker that says historical.
Well, that's, that's Alpharetta's local...
Right.
Program. So they don't conform to any state regs. In fact, I think they just developed an historic preservation ordinance over there in the Historic Commission, I believe. I know they were working on the, on the ordinance, but that program of the historic signage has been going on for somewhat 10 years. Alpharetta Historic Society's been behind that, from working in collaboration with the city.
Actually, we'll look into that, and I'm going to use this as an opportunity for another shameless plug to remember we have a Historic Historic Commission that only has two members on it, so.
Bless you.
Just, just throw it out there. One thing that you'll see then, in looking at the capital budget, is you'll see kind of the total bottom line. And the total bottom line is driven to a number that I think is, and that I can recommend to you, is doable every year, so that it's not, this isn't one of these capital plans that puts a bunch of projects out there and says, wouldn't it be neat if? None of these dollar figures are at a place that, that I look at and say, I don't believe that's doable in the year it's approved. So I just want you to know that that's kind of a rationale that we put behind it. You'll see behind the capital budget, you'll not, then you go to independent project sheets as you continue to review the budget. So one thing I'd like to go back to in the budget, and that was in the Parks Department, as it relates to the intergovernmental agreement that we have with the City of Alpharetta for the offset non-resident fees in our parks program. I believe, and I guess I'm kind of looking to gauge your opinion on this, I believe that when we entered into that agreement, the thought process behind that was that as we brought facilities onboard, that the rightsizing of these fees paid to each other would occur sooner or later, and maybe not in our serving time, but at some point in the future, they would, they would balance enough that the subsidy, to the degree there's a subsidy paid, would go away, that we would bring equal assets to the table. I believe we are bringing, this year, we are bringing more assets to the table than when we started the agreement. We have two additional rectangular fields, we've got a beautiful, brand-new park of assorted-sized diamond fields that will offer assortment of programs to be provided on them. We have intergovernmental agreements at Birmingham Falls, Cogburn, Hopewell, Northwestern. We've got more space, Hopewell, I think I said that. We've got more space and assets than we had when that agreement was started. We've initially sent word to Alpharetta that we believe that there should be a reduction. And we threw an offer out there, because I'm not a big believer in asking and not having them tell. So we started with a number that we believe that they would probably negotiate from, which is fine. But we started with that number. They have asked that we participate and speak, and make this petition to their Parks and Rec Commission on Thursday of this week, Thursday in the evening. Their structure's a little bit different, we have an advisory board, they have a commission, so their commission hears and is responsible for different things than maybe our advisory board is. I guess I'm interested in, number one, your perspective of, do you believe that we should see less cost this year? And if you believe that we should see less cost this year because of us bringing new facilities online, is it a deal killer if all of a sudden they say, you didn't bring enough online? They haven't said that. But I still am a bit, want to be cautious on the front end, that I believe there's still some frustration that revolves around the decision Milton made with respect to our football director, just to be very honest with you in that. So I'm not, I don't think I'm saying anything that you've not heard, but I kind of don't want to send a staff member into a public meeting with another public body without knowing what our direction from the council is. And I don't know that there will be a recommendation to say, it needs to stay the same because we don't like, you know, that wasn't in keeping with what we thought the decision that you should have made to help it enhance and expand our parks program between the two cities. But if, in fact, they did, you don't have to necessarily tell me right now, but I'd love to hear from you as to whether or not that's a deal killer for you with this intergovernmental agreement, and whether we would, whether we would let it lapse and figure out a different way to do this than continuing in the form that we have.
Chris, remind me the, and the way I was thinking of it, if we built these facilities on here in Milton, then obviously we would then have programs and use among our own facilities, which would then balance and equilibrium with regards to Parks and Rec participants in both cities. So like our football players that were playing at AYFA would now be coming over to play over in Milton, so therefore those costs that we were initially incurring would automatically, be market-driven, go away, right? Are we, are we paying those anyway, whether or not they choose to play over at Milton or AYFA?
We, at this point, with the way the IGA is structured, is that if a Milton person chooses to play at Alpharetta...
If they choose, yeah.
If they choose, they don't pay a non-resident fee in Alpharetta.
Right.
And vice versa.
Right.
So if an Alpharetta person, Alpharetta citizen, wants to come play at Bell Memorial Park for the Milton Steelers, they can do... Park for the Milton Steelers, they can do that.
Right.
Without it costing extra. The one to highlight, though, is not to get bogged down into this football debate, because there's no win there. The one that's the strongest contender for the IGA being a needed thing is girls' softball that happens in North Park, because that is not one that we can replicate anytime soon, nor do we, nor do I think that even if we could replicate it, why would we take participants that are wholly contained in an island in the city of Milton and move them to a different place in Milton?
Right.
So.
Do we have, I mean, do we have the numbers to know exactly how many Milton residents are participating in Alpharetta-sponsored programs?
Yes, we do. And those numbers look very different this year than they'll ever look again, because we had a lot of people leave Milton to go play baseball in Alpharetta when we didn't offer a baseball program. So the answer to your question is yes, we have it to the person, because we do reconcile at the end of the year for the purposes of making our payments. It's us paying them because their contribution to us is always offset because our number's always bigger. But we do have that on a program-by-program basis, and if that's something that you'd like to see, we can certainly get it to you.
So basically, we get numbers at the end of the year that said, 5,000 people participated in this, and the difference in the non-resident fee and the resident fee times that is what you owe us.
So it's all based on a formula?
It is based on a formula.
So it should be something to easily conclude on, once we know all of the numbers, whether it's beneficial or not.
Correct. The thing that we agreed to in that formula, though, was that, once we identified what the cost of the program was, there was a multiplier in there to pay for some of the capitalization of the fields in the first place, because, you know, the Alpharetta citizen paid for, now in this case, the Milton citizen paid for the $10 million park, so there's some offset in there. So if we take that difference today and take the multiplier of 1.5 and say that we owe Alpharetta $300,000, I'm just wondering, and it seems to reason, that the 1.5 should no longer be 1.5. That, I don't know that it's necessarily 1.2, but I know it's a number south of 1.5.
What was our negotiated number? What was our negotiated number?
Right now, before we bring Bum Memorial Park online, we're at 1.5.
Right.
But I don't, so that's where I want to make sure that the staff doesn't get crossways with the council, that I don't, I want to make sure that when we walk into a public meeting, if we walk into a public meeting later in the week, that if there's a, well, what should that 1.5 be? I'd like to have some idea of what the 1.5 should be, south of 1.5. And more importantly, I think I'd need to kind of know how to react if they say the 1.5 is still 1.5.
So we're dealing with some arbitrary factor.
We are, absolutely.
So where does that?
So there's got to be some way to resolve. That comes to some understanding and substantiated by some data that we have, participation, cost. Those are the two factors that are involved in this formula.
There was, but there was some arbitrariness to it, because we had Matt and Jim Gilvin in as we were trying to craft this concept out of nothing, that said, you know, so was there any, where was the magic that came up with the 1.5? I do think, to some degree, it was a subjective number we got to.
And what was, and what is it now, remind me again, what is that costing us now, 1.5, within real dollars?
Between 300,000 and 400,000.
Right, so.
And how much would it cost if we just reimbursed our residents for the out-of-pocket fees that they paid Alpharetta?
50% less than it's costing us.
I mean, I thought that's what out-of-pocket fees were supposed to pay for, was the?
It was more, this was more of the mindset of us sharing in the partnership of Parks Without Borders, in that we recognize the capitalization. If we truly are interested, you know, the problem I struggle with that is I don't know how to start and how to stop that, because once you end up there, I'm going to call it a duck-a-duck, you end up with a subsidy that you pay to a family in Milton that has a kid that plays in Alpharetta, and I don't know that Ken would, Ken might say that's a gratuity. Ken's probably saying that's a gratuity.
Absolutely.
So that's why we get uncomfortable going there.
Well, I mean, my opinion is, is if we go to this discussion on Thursday, and it's a, no, it is what it is, and we should have that discussion, but, you know, there's a lot of things that we do with Alpharetta. I don't want to jeopardize the larger for a part, so.
I agree with that.
The question, I guess I maybe I've got into as well, is would you all like a representative of council to attend with staff at that meeting? And if you did, would you like to select who that would be that could go with us? Even if it's for no other reason than to sit in the room and hear the discussion and show that we're supportive of figuring it out? Or maybe going so far as to say the elected official makes the better presenter and makes the better plea? I just don't want the council to feel as though they've not been invited to our appearance on this Parks and Rec stage Thursday night late. Or if you, I mean, I am fine with staff attending, as long as the council is supportive of staff attending for the purpose of trying to continue to a negotiated partnership within the framework of the existing.
Negotiation doesn't end if that, I mean, it just is, it starts.
Right, we all have to come back to.
Frankly, it could tank at this meeting on Thursday, and just like our Parks and Rec advisory board, if you all thought that what they did was so wrong for the future policy of Milton, you could go a different direction.
Right.
That exists in Alpharetta as well.
Right.
I'm fine with supporting the staff to go and see what.
Okay.
I mean, I'll be glad to go again if someone else doesn't else want to go, but I was there the first time.
I mean, is it easier in some ways if you go and council's not there, so you don't have to commit to anything, or?
Oh, I can dance really well. Like, I can't really, y'all don't want to see that. You know, I don't, I battled this one all weekend, Karen, and as Jim could attest at lunch today, I'm still struggling with it in my head. I could play out about 15 different ways that it could go. Some of those, I say that we might be better. Probably playing out my negotiating strategy on a public stage, which is a bad thing to do, but sometimes, to the extent there might still be a little spark there with respect to fire, maybe having one of the members that voted for that spark there causes the spark to happen again. Conversely, if that truly exists as an issue that we need to battle through, sometimes it might be able to, you know, be in front of a group and say, you know, this is why. I don't, I think it could go either way. Why don't, and then in the form of making a recommendation, why don't we then, as long as the council's comfortable and is not just cringing with the fact that staff would go to this type of a meeting without a member of council there, let us give it a shot and see where it goes? If, once it gets to the level of being presented to their city council, now I'm probably going to ask that a member of council be the one to present to their council, just because that's.
What would be a win-win situation?
That the Parks and Rec Commission, they are recognized as that we're bringing, we have more assets now than we had then, and that that 1.5 is reduced to something below 1.3. Okay, as long as that doesn't sound like a decent place to push towards, we'll take a stab at it and we'll just report back.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions on the budget? I do have a couple of updates I need to give you tonight before we depart.
How are we, remind me again, the gateway signage, how's that coming along, completion? I see the next couple of years we have some of that there, but.
All right, it's coming along. As you know, Michelle McIntosh-Ross is the one that is leading that charge amongst the staff members, and we have those, have that map that we could get to you again that shows the placement for the primary signs, the larger signs versus those entrances that would have the smaller signs. It's all based upon a plan, and you'll see the sign that's the typical Milton sign there that's in front of the Broadway Pavilion and one above Birmingham Highway north in the city.
Right.
That's the sign in different scale depending on location that will.
Sure.
Continue to be implemented.
Along that, the last time I drove 372 South to that sign on the north side, that might be one of those that falls under some specialized landscaping versus just bush hog as close as you can get to it as well, or all of them, as they go up.
Okay, good point. Okay, a couple of things I just want to put in your head, by way of some announcements, is the ribbon cutting for Bum Memorial Park is September the 11th, so that was a follow-up from the last meeting we had, I guess, September the 12th. The Friends of the Milton Library Book Barn is opening up, so we didn't want to conflict with that schedule, so we're going to go September the 11th in the afternoon or early evening. We'll be out of there in time for people that would come that would want to go to a football game in Milton or at Cambridge to be able to get to the game at 7:30. Both of our high school teams play in town that night. We're talking at this point about a grand opening, plus a, you know, more of a grand opening, probably more of a family fun day, just to really highlight the park on a Saturday, not the following Saturday, but a Saturday later in September, and watch for details about that. This is going to be, this is going to sound real crazy, I'm even going to bring this up, I need to put it in your head, is that we need to name the street that City Hall's going to be called. And I know you think, oh goodness, Chris, that's all the way up to April 2017, but we do. We need to name the street that City Hall will be on, and we need to pick the number sequence that we want it to be. And, you know, this is one of those, and other duties as assigned, because I didn't know that we were going to be able to name it Pennsylvania Avenue and then pick a number to go in front of it. But we want it to be something that looks, you know, that sounds good, that we will share that street address with seven homes. So I want you to be, just start to think about what that road should be called. In Alpharetta, they went from Two South Main Street to Something Park Place, whatever they, so they named their street Park Place. But we will have the authority to do that, and I thought that, you know, I don't think it's my job in a vacuum to figure out the road that's going to forever be on in El Dorge, so just be thinking about that and be thinking about what you'd like in, by way of a number.
Still have a dedicated street down there that runs behind the Shell Station. Say Crab Apple Circle?
Crab Apple Circle is the name of it.
We have an abandoned.
We have not. Have a good ring to it. Okay, that, unless you have any questions, me or the staff, that's what I've.
We haven't talked a lot lately about Karen's idea way back when of For the Love of Cities. How's that, how does that implement with all this?
You'll see, when we open up Bum Memorial Park, you'll see our first Geocache, or, you know, that's kind of what we've been waiting for, is to get people, I mean, that was kind of where we left that. So watch for that as a thing. Somebody beat us to the pavilion, I think. I think there's one, it might be right across the street, but somebody beat us to the problem, the Geocache. I had no idea that was that cool.
What about you, the shirts and things like that, too? And I know you were ordering those Nike shirts, but we had the horse shirt at the side and all that.
The what, Tom?
Yeah, the horse, the t-shirt that went on the side, that was pretty cool, and I'm just remembering.
Yeah, we had some of those examples. I mean, if you thought that was, I didn't get tremendous feedback on that sign, or that shirt as being cool. We kind of went with the one that we debuted at Earth Day, which is, you know, I love Milton because, and then had the kids write on why they love Milton, and we have quite a good internet campaign going with those things. We've got, you know, we've had some great success with the Shades thing, you know, where we've gotten some pictures from Karen's taking some of the Europe.
I've got mine.
Right there.
I've got mine packed and ready to go to vacation.
All right.
But, yeah, any and all creative ways, we can, you know, allow people to fall in love with their community. I'm open to the options. But yes, the whole Geocache thing, which I think was the primary focus that we had, will be a rollout at Bum Park.
You need to make a council Geocaching retreat.
Oh, I forgot about the council retreat this week, Friday. Hopefully you got the background booklet that you can spend some time re-upping on mission and vision and some of the background information we got with the non-scientific survey, but I don't think it was anything terribly unexpected, and I think, and that's good, I think, that if it was all of a sudden unexpected, we'd look at it and go, whoa.
Do we need to bring anything other than our booklet? Do we need to bring our computer to plug that thumb drive into? Do we need to be able to access any of that?
That was all just for your pre-review.
Okay.
We'll have the room set up from a technology perspective. The one thing the Y has asked, I think Christine sent this out, is they, one of their values is healthy lifestyle, so we are trying to comply with that, and I agree that we will try to bring in healthy food and bring in bottled water as opposed to bringing in a bunch of Diet Cokes. We've already told Karen she needs to brown bag a couple of Diet Cokes if she needs to. But that's the only thing that would be different that day, is that we're going to try to, we're going to try to focus around the healthy lifestyle. I will tell you as well, is that the Y is really excited about us coming, and if you would, just take a moment while you're there to, if somebody offers a tour of the facility, it would be great if you'd see what they have to offer. They're a community resource that we're not really tapped into to this point, because I've always acquitted them, and maybe you have too, with it being the Alpharetta Y, when really their service area, they serve by district, is all of them in Fulton County. They serve Milton citizens, Roswell citizens, Alpharetta citizens. They really have a stronghold and a footprint on some really needed services in this area, so I'd just ask that you.
That book that we got for the Strikethole session, that was done in-house?
Mm-hmm, yeah, Jason did that.
Looked very nice, and did we even print it here, or did you have to send it off to you?
I had to send it off, yeah. Book by, I mean, when you get it down, you have to.
But it was, looked.
Good deal, good deal. All right, y'all, thanks for a good work session. Appreciate it. Calls, questions on the budget, we'll put together a team to answer whatever you come up with.